I'll to order the special committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, July 30th. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Araza, Lancy, Beck, Peifer, Sulfah, Wolf, Baron, Lehman, Ayazi, Malay, Uwer, Serone.
Conduct the meeting and hopefully everybody else will show up. The only one I know that's not going to be here tonight is Volvo Singer. Second item agenda tonight is a reminder to please speak in the microphone. If you come up, just adjust it down and make sure you can see the green light on and hear yourself in the background. And then item three is items removed, added or changed. Do we have anything? Okay. And then we'll move on to item four, which is matters from the public for items not on our agenda tonight. Is anybody here for anything not on the agenda? Okay. Move right on then to item number five, which is resolution 2024-105R, final plat of subdivision for Ashton Ridge, 1,100 McKee Street, 301 North Van Ortwick, Pulte Homes LLC is the applicant. Drew?
Sure. Thank you. The Gellman. Yeah, this is, this item is resolution 24105, which would be approving the final plat of subdivision for the Ashton Ridge subdivision. If you recall, earlier this year in May, the city council did approve a preliminary plat for the Ashton Ridge subdivision. This is the former furnace factory site, also known as the Siemens factory site, along with the Wyre property. It's approximately 31 acres and the proposed project is 73 single family and 86 townhomes. Staff is final, is reviewing the final engineering for this project and is continuing to do so. So there are some conditions of approval within the resolution to basically address if there's anything that comes out of the, the staff or the, the reviewing of the, the final engineering by staff. So with the planning commission review, the planning commission did find that the preliminary plat or the final plat is in conformance with the preliminary plat that was originally approved. They did have some questions about timing, about the process, as well as making sure that some of the items that were incorporated into the resolution of approval and the, the ordinance for zoning for the site were incorporated into the, the final plat, which staff was able to confirm for them as well. So they did recommend by a vote of six to zero, recommend approval of the final plat. And staff does recommend approval as presented with conditions included.
Anybody have any questions? I think we've got everything in there that we talked about the last time we had this in front of us, as far as the path and the other stuff. Any questions? If not, I'll make the motion that we recommend the council, resolution 2024-105R, final plat of subdivision for Ashton Ridge, 1,100 McKee Street, 301 North Van Ortwick, Pulte Homes LLC applicant.
Second.
Who's second?
Me.
Ayazi, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
So one no.
Two no's.
Two no's, okay. So Malay and Beck, okay. And we'll move on to item six, which is other. Do we have any others tonight? Anybody? Okay. Then we will move right on then to the interview process. And do we want to just go in the order that you've got there?
Sure.
And then if we could have Joshua Einstein Curtis come on up? And if we could have the other?
Take the other instead, Appleton. So while we have one candidate being interviewed, we think it's more fair to have the other candidates leave the room so that everybody's hearing the questions for the first time when they come up to the podium. So Max will take the other three candidates to the Appleton room.
Hi there, I guess I should state I'm Josh Einstein Curtis, 786 North Van Ortwick, you know, keep it. So I guess the first question is, do I get an opening statement? How do you want to?
That's typically what we'll do is just say, you can go ahead and introduce yourself, give us your reasons why you'd like to be an alderman, and then we'll ask you a few questions.
Sure. So it's an interesting one. I have been, I've lived in several cities at this point. We moved here from Pittsburgh about two years ago. Before that, I've lived in Naperville, Fort Collins, Boston, Connecticut. Also, that's not a great sign moving a lot, obviously, you know, going for an alderman position. But at the same time, one reason we chose to come out here is that we have seen that Batavia has really done almost, almost everything that we really like to see. And I have been involved in several organizations doing, I was chair, for example, of the Form on Graduate Student Affairs for the APS, National Physics Society. And the other thing I've always done is I've always been interested in advocacy of some sort. One reason I started out in college, actually, going into entertainment, doing video production, was because I feel that theater and entertainment is one of the few ways you're able to communicate with people and really tell them what's going on. And a lot of that has also been lost. And that's one reason that I really want to be involved in making the decisions for the town that I live in, is that we have a very diverse community, especially in the third ward right now, where we have a bunch of people who've moved in. We have a lot of conflict over the school. We have a lot of, not really conflict, but we're going to have this new, new subdivision put in. And we also, of course, have the questions of what's the commercial makeup of this area going to be like? You know, just south of the third ward, west of the third ward even, you know? And I'd like to be able to help make a difference for the people in the ward and to help, you know, I talked with Dan a couple of times when we had issues ourselves, and I really respect his ability to communicate and work with me, and I would love the chance to do that as well for the residents of Batavia, so.
Want to start off with a question? I guess I'll start then. What do you think is your, your greatest strength you'd bring to the council?
Well, one thing I strongly believe is that everybody, everybody needs to have their voice heard in this sort of a system. And it's, it's sort of a throwaway line, but it's, it's, it's really true. And the other side to that is that everyone needs their voice recorded. If you are coming to anyone saying that, let me bring up an example from recently out on connecting Skyline Drive out west. There's talking with some of the people who are, who are there after one of the meetings, you know, and she's saying, well, Batavia never talked to us. We never heard from anyone. You know, the engineer there is saying they never heard from Batavia. Geneva is saying, well, that's their responsibility to tell you. And that sort of communication breakdown is one that is, is something I really feel that I can help, you know, find the right people to talk to so people know what's going on. Especially now where we're running into an issue with like Shaw Local, for example, where we have paywalls on the news stories. There's really only so many places people have to go for the news. And if they don't know where to go for it, I don't know what we're going to do. So that's, that's part of what I want to do is, is reach out to the people in the area, let them know these are the resources that we have. And also, if possible, find a way to, if anything, you know, better index things so that people can actually track down what we're posting on our site day of. Make sure that we have the right press releases out that are needed as soon as possible, instead of relying on an organization where you might have used up your deli allotment of articles, you know, two days ago. And I think that's, there's some issues with communication right now on that, especially with all the different districts in the area with the different jurisdictions and how broadly you have to cast your net as the city, as opposed to, you know, Parks District or something like that.
So you mentioned a couple of things, Chris Sulfah, by the way. And first thing, you do realize that there is like kind of the separation of all these entities. We have nothing to do with the school. We have nothing to do with the Park District. So these are things that are often complained of to aldermen, and you have to explain to them that's not part of our situation. So that's kind of my question. What do you think your job is as an alderman?
As, as I see it, you're the person who tells people where they can actually go to get what they need. Because, especially in Illinois, you know, you have no idea who owns the land that might be right next to your property unless you have a copy of the plat or, and that could even be wrong. One of the things that came up recently at the library board meeting was that there were old maps that they're trying to track down of the area from the 1800s, and they're trying to get those publicly available. And those have things like the old utilities right of ways and such, and where the old pipes were. But I had no idea those even existed. And I don't even know if I have even seen them available around here. So that, that's how I see it at least, is you're, you're the point of communication. So that's how I see it, at least, is you're the point of communication. People go to the website or, or they contact the city, and if they're in your ward, you have to tell them, well, how do you accomplish what you're trying to do? And conflict resolution or communications.
We're going to ask a question. Mayor is handling it first.
I wanted to ask a question of all.
Sure.
The city council that you see here and the city staff over the last three or four years have spent a lot of time and energy trying to enhance the downtown. Do you see anything that we haven't done or need, or can you have any ideas of things we could do with the downtown to further make it a great place for people who want to come? We got that going now.
I know my, there's what I think we can do and what I would love to do. One thing I think would be amazing is if we had something like a very large investment fund to give grants to people to move in and try out new businesses in buildings, like the Ethan Allen Building. Or, for example, what is the name? I'm blanking right now. The Donut Place out by the tracks and Prairie, that building is falling apart, and the city has no relation to it. It's a private building. But there should be some mechanism in place where we can say, look, if you lose your businesses because you're falling apart, you know, there's some sort of funding mechanism in place, similar to the grants for the businesses in downtown. I don't know, from a personal perspective, that's the best thing, I think. From a policy perspective, I think that we're doing things that are right. I wish we had, I wish we had more large residential, you know, high-density residential downtown. I think that would help a lot because people would be interested in going and staying in the community downtown. But I'm not really sure otherwise right now. I think we've done a lot of it. Thank you.
Kind of a philosophical question, that same thing I got asked when I was in your position seven years ago, I think. As an elected official or alderman, you have to make a lot of decisions, many of them unpopular. And you're a constituent or you're there to serve your constituents. Issue comes up, you're hearing from a large number of your constituents, constituents that they want you to vote a certain way, but you feel the right way is different. How do you handle that?
I mean, the first thing I would handle is find out whether or not that's actually a large number of my constituents, or if it's a large vocal minority of my constituents. And if that requires, you know, me going out and actually asking people, or I would probably do that if the issue was bad enough or interesting enough. But otherwise, yeah, you have to vote for what you think is best for your constituents long-term. I, for example, if everyone's not wanting to put in a water main project because it's going to tear up the roads, and you're hearing a lot about that, I hate to say it, but you know, you might need to continue forward and move on with that project to get it done for the future in 30 years from now, to have a water main that's still working. But other than that, I, you know, you have to represent your constituents. Yeah. It's figuring that out, that's the problem.
Tony stole my question. But I could pivot and just stay, talk to us about your other commitments in the context that this job takes 50-plus meetings a year, a lot of reading, a lot of commitment. How are you going to balance that with other commitments in your life?
So the nice thing is that I have a 20-month-old. Now, that's both a blessing and a curse, because at 20 months, at this point, I actually have more time again. But generally, I work remote for a company based out of Colorado, and that actually gives me a lot of flexibility in setting my own schedule, unfortunately, and also having the time available to be involved in community. I also believe that it's, if you know the meetings generally ahead of time, I'm not worried about being able to meet the time commitment. I'm aware of how much time it takes. I think at this point, I've attended four or five meetings, and we, my wife and I have a plan in place to be able to handle that. So. Thank you.
Anybody else? Leah?
Are you currently on a commission?
I am. So I guess I didn't mention it. Yeah, I'm on the Active Transportation Commission right now. I, personally, I think it's also really important. We have a lot of applicants coming in, though, as well, who might be even more qualified than me for active transportation. So I actually feel somewhat comfortable either way. And I feel that, yeah, I feel that being involved is something I need to do. Otherwise, I'm not really a part of the community. So.
And how did you get on that commission? Like, did you seek it out? Did somebody come in and invite you?
I can't remember where I first heard about it, actually, but I definitely sought it out and tracked it down. Actually, I don't remember. But yeah, active transportation is one of the things I'm really interested in, and that's not biking. I consider that to be pedestrian and biking and senior transit and other issues, and that's one of the big things for me.
Do you have any specific policy goals you'd like to pursue, or still a score, you know, wait to see how things run first?
I think, I don't have any specific policy goals right now because I see that things are really changing quickly in a lot of ways, in terms of the makeup of the businesses. I just don't know where it's going right now. And one thing I would love to see is a, more of a long-term plan for things like industrial versus heavy, light industrial versus, you know, more involved commercial areas. Because right now, they're sort of speckled throughout the city. And we also have, outside of us, you know, significantly more numbers of warehouses that are going up, which increases truck traffic related to the city. So I'm more curious in being able to establish a long-term plan that's not just a couple of years out. I think we really need something that's a five-to-10-year plan for what sort of goals the city is trying to go towards for businesses and what the business and residential makeup is going to look up, look like in the future. And right now, I feel like without that, it's very difficult to say whether or not you should even build single-family homes versus, you know, some sort of senior living community versus anything. It's, without that, you're just trusting on the market, and I feel like that's not the best way to go long-term. So.
Leah almost stole my question, but I'll ask it again, just so I can ask the other candidates, too. You're familiar with our bike and pedestrian active transportation plan. What do you see as being the top priority for improving bike and pedestrianism in Batavia?
I think a lot of it for Batavia is educating the drivers. And that's, that's not saying, we have, we have crazy bikers and we have crazy drivers, but we also have significant thoroughfares where people are traveling at very high speeds. And our detours, when they're active, are the same speed as the high-speed roads. So we're, the two things I see are, one is, it, we, okay, so earlier, was it last week, we talked about all the cars at the high school? And the question there is, well, why aren't the students able to get to the high school? That's my first question. Is there a better way to handle that so that we don't have so many cars? I don't know. Probably not, honestly. But is there even a bike path right now going to the high school? Do we have, are all the new communities that are being built out west, are they, are we considering what bike traffic and pedestrian traffic looks like going to and from downtown to those communities? Things like that are really important to me. So I feel like if we have the infrastructure, people will use it. But without it, people have no reason to, and it's kind of the problem.
I apologize for being late. I'm interested if, what knowledge you have over the situation with the dam right now and the different options we've been considering and what your viewpoint is on that.
So I'm, from a, there's a personal perspective and there's a long-term perspective. Personally, it's, I like the river how it is. It's very nice. And I mean that to be glib in a lot of ways, but at the same time, the maintenance costs of those dams is not, nothing. And I think what's really missing from the discussion, and I haven't even really seen a good discussion of it, is, well, get rid of the dams, what will it look like? And I haven't seen a really good push by anyone to say, well, here's what this looks like before and after, and here's what we will be doing different. So the Parks District project right now, where they're building up the new, from their grant, all the entertainment and everything, what's that going to look like if the dams went away? Is it being planned for that? I don't actually know. But that's the sort of thing that worries me more, is long-term planning without knowing what it looks like. To me personally, I don't have any care if we have the dams or don't, as long as, as long as we can replace what would be taken away, whether that's recreational water sports, maybe if people want to kayak and they're losing their lake. Okay, is there another lake somewhere we might be able to pick up from the Parks District or direct people there? I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll switch categories.
Next is Joanne Gustafson.
Thank you.
We ought to wait around because we're going to make a decision at the end of this.
Winner must be present.
Oh, yeah, we didn't tell you, it's special training. And you're a part of it. As far as I know. Baptism by fire.
Can I speak first?
Yeah. If you want to go ahead and start, we'll just let you, give you a couple minutes here to tell us a little bit about yourself.
Older setup here. My name is Alice Lomen. Buenas noches. Me llamo Alice Lomen. I was born in the northwest suburbs of Chicago, and I grew up in Franklin Park near O'Hare Airport. I grew up in a low-income family and am a first-generation American. Seeing my parents' struggles to raise five children and work multiple jobs is what motivated me to dedicate my life to public service, both professionally and in volunteer work. In high school and in college, I joined numerous service clubs and leadership clubs, brought change to communities throughout the country. My first job was at my local park district, and I worked the front desk, helping translate for our Spanish-speaking residents. In college, I was a tutor for America Reads, America Counts, and I earned my degree in International Studies and Political Science. I learned that through organization and action, we can better serve our community. I jumped right into campaigning for a nonpartisan political campaign to get out the vote. For me, it's important to get people involved and to participate. And that was a very challenging six months, but it was really fulfilling at the same time. I literally traveled coast to coast, Boston to San Diego, and I got, gained a lot of insight into local issues affecting citizens and also in organizing volunteers. It further developed my communication and leadership skills. And then once the campaign ended, I wanted to continue to give back, but closer to home. So I began my career in nonprofit management, where I utilized my native-speaking Spanish skills again to manage employment and training programs, to help low-income individuals become self-sufficient. I continued my career in public service at Catholic Charities in Chicago, where I managed projects and events to cultivate relationships with our donors, to secure funding for the many programs that we offer, that they offer, to serve people in need. I left Chicago to raise my family in Batavia because it's a family-friendly town and has a lot of potential. My husband and I have a son in seventh grade. He's at Rotolo Middle School, and my daughter is in fourth grade at HC Storm. When my son began kindergarten, I became very involved in my PTO, and I served as the PTO VP of Special Events on the Board and numerous committees throughout the years. For the past three years, I've been a substitute teacher in Batavia schools for K through 12. And yes, I've done it at the high school, and I worked with local community leaders to better our community. Throughout this experience, I have met a large population of Spanish-speaking residents throughout Batavia. I have built relationships over the years and have bridged communication gaps within our town. And I see the need for a bilingual alderwoman in Batavia to make these connections. Veo la necesidad de una concejal bilingüe en Batavia para hacer conexiones. In preparation for this interview, I utilize a process that I plan to use on council. I researched the main issues in Batavia by using the knowledge that I had by attending meetings and watching them online. I also use your website, a lot of information on there. I met with local community leaders, alderpeople, and residents throughout the town to ask questions and get informed on our community's needs. I understand and I represent the diverse perspectives and needs of our residents. I want to be an alderwoman because I want to ensure that our community's interests are effectively represented in local government. I feel it is important for the city council to continue the work that Dan did by giving a voice to the underrepresented residents in our community. Dan made Batavia more inclusive, and with him leaving, I want to continue to make Batavia welcoming to all. I want to be a part of the growth of this community and advocate for solutions that improve the quality of life for everyone in Batavia. Quiero ser parte del crecimiento de nuestra comunidad y quiero defender soluciones que mejoren la calidad de vida de todos en Batavia. All of my life, I have gravitated toward public service, and I believe that my life experience and my background have prepared me to serve on city council. Your consideration is greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Got a few questions for you. I'll start off. What do you think your greatest strength that you would bring to the council?
I think my greatest strength would be my community engagement. I'm really good at building connections, building relationships and making connections. As I mentioned in my opening statement, from everything that I've done in my volunteer work to my professional work experience, that's literally me, community engagement, right? From working in the campaign, from working in nonprofits, from working in the schools, with my neighborhood initiatives, that's me. So I think that's my strongest asset, my communication skills.
I know you've worked, Chris Soufa, by the way, and I know you mentioned that you work in the schools, and as an alderman, we'd be focused solely on the city work, not schools, not library, not Park District. So what do you think your job as an alderman would be for the Third Ward and for the city in general?
Well, good question. So I was reading on the strategic plan that came out recently, and I feel that, that vision and that mission, the end there, really spoke to me as far as what city council is about, you know, fostering community development, sustainable development, community engagement, working with different government entities, I mean, with the end goal to make Batavia better, right? Capital improvement projects, being fiscally responsible, environmentally responsible, socially responsible, all these different things that are very important into ensuring that Batavia continues to grow and go in the right direction for a better future for all of the community.
I'll let the mayor go first. Okay.
You're sitting here with the city council and the city staff that spent a lot of time and energy in the last few years, specifically hording in on the downtown and doing things to enhance and improve the downtown. Do you have any other ideas for? You're sitting here with the city council and the city staff that spent a lot of time and energy in the last few years, specifically hording in on the downtown and doing things to enhance and improve the downtown. Do you have any other ideas for doing things downtown that would continue to bolster Batavia?
Going back to the vision and the mission, I think there are a lot of great ideas out there. Speaking to residents and community leaders, you know, you asked me specifically what my ideas are, I agree with what I've been hearing, and that is that I want to promote more accessibility within the town, continue to develop the downtown Batavia, as everyone says, it's the heart of the town, but also, you know, not forget the rest of Batavia. Batavia's pretty big. And so, you know, we have a lot of development along Randall, we have a lot of community capital improvement projects with the stormwater going on around town, the road diet, you know, that's in the works. So I'd like to continue to see all those projects through, make sure we're asking the right questions, and that we're doing it responsibly, right, fiscally and socially responsibly.
Tony Millay, Fourth Ward, kind of a philosophical question that was asked of me when I was in your position about seven years ago, standing before the council. As an elected official, you have to make a lot of decisions, a lot of difficult decisions, and your job is to represent your constituents. Let's say an issue comes along and your, a large number of your constituents wants you to vote a certain way, but you believe the correct vote is to vote opposite of them. How do you handle that?
I would go to my process, which I mentioned in my statement. With anything, any decision-making that I make, I make sure that I research that topic myself with any information given to me as a council member. I'm assuming you're privy to information that the rest of the public is not. And I would make sure that I seek guidance from the experts, as you've done during meetings. You have people come and present, and you ask questions, look at the data, look at the facts, and make sure I'm speaking to my community leaders as well, right, and my residents in all of Batavia. My ward's important, yes, but I'm also representing all of Batavia. And I really admire how everyone comes together, and you have good discussions here, and you're all discussing to come to the best outcome. I don't have all the best ideas, but I'm willing to listen and have good discussion to make sure we make the best informed decision.
I was going to change my question, but I'll go keep it consistent. Are you aware of the time commitment to this? There's over 50 meetings a year, Mondays and Tuesdays, and then there's other meetings and a lot of reading and whatnot. How do you plan on managing that commitment with your other personal, professional, and family commitments?
Yes, I am aware of that. Having watched many meetings online, you know, part of me felt, well, I'm already doing this, I think it's time, my children are getting older, you know, I have the flexibility as a substitute teacher, which I'm very fortunate in that aspect. So yes, I'm ready to do it, and I have the flexibility and the interest to do it.
I'm interested to know what knowledge you have over the, our decisions around the dam right now and what your thoughts are on that.
From what I know and what I've heard, the dam is in a standstill right now because of the option that we voted on, what you voted on, that the Army Corps of Engineering will not give us funding for that option. So I'd like to know more about the information that you have. When I first heard about that, I, my instinct was to do what was necessary to receive funding, right, and at the same time, listen to what the residents of Batavia and this community want, and bring that to discussion with everyone else to see how everyone felt, to see what the best decision would be.
Do you have any specific policy goals you'd like to pursue in office?
I don't have a specific policy goal. I think that I, what I want to see is Batavia to continue to move forward, to continue to redevelop the downtown and develop the downtown, especially along the riverfront. In doing so, I believe, you know, we have accessibility in mind, as I've heard in many meetings, so we can have more walkability, more cyclists-friendly roads and pedestrians, and better traffic signals, and safer, safer for the pedestrians and everybody that's walking. I know myself, I live four blocks away from the river, and you ask me how many times I've walked to the river, and I can count on one hand, you know, and that's sad, that's really sad. We have a beautiful natural resource that really is our greatest asset and greatest, you know, challenge at the same time.
Abby?
Well, you gave a great segue to my question, which was in regards to our active transportation plan and if you had any specific priorities that you see for our town for improving pedestrian and cyclist access in town?
I just, I want to make sure that any new development or improvements that are made in our town have accessibility in mind.
Thank you, and just hang around out there, and we'll make a decision after we get through the next two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could be throwing up in the bathroom.
You guys are fine, you don't need me.
Opening statement.
First off, thank you all, and have a good evening. My name's Kevin Malone, and I'm very excited to be considered for the Third Ward Alderman position. I've been a member of, lived in Batavia now for six years, but I've been a member of this community for over 14. My wife and I went on our second date down at O'Brien's, which used to be on River Street. My wife is a teacher at Batavia High School, and ever since that date, I fell in love with both a woman and a town, right? This town has an incredible community. It's a community that I wanted to be part of, wanted to live in, to the point where when we were searching for our home, we only looked in Batavia, and we were able to find our home here. Why we picked Batavia was the sense of community that we felt here, and we wanted to be part of that. Community is what has driven me throughout my life. I've committed my life to developing community, fostering community, and growing community. Community is what drove me to join the Peace Corps right out of college. I served in the southern country, southern African country of Lesotho, high up in the mountains. It drove me to get a master's degree in conflict resolution, focusing on small government, problem-solving, and collaborative processes. And it brought me back home to the Midwest. I'm originally from DeKalb, I'm now here in Batavia, and I've started my family here. I think you saw my little kids making too much noise back there, I apologize. What I'd like to share with you here in my opening statement are two very quick skills that I think I can bring to the table. First, listening. For nine years, I ran the foreclosure mediation program over at the Kane County Courthouse. I also started and launched the eviction mediation program at the Kane County Courthouse. Those are two programs working to stabilize housing in Kane County. Every homeowner facing foreclosure was told to call me personally, and I spoke with thousands of residents in Kane County facing foreclosure. I heard stories from Batavians, from people in Geneva, from all over, and about the hardship that they were facing. Sometimes those were Spanish speakers who were having trouble accessing the resources available due to language. Other times, it was elderly residents who were having trouble navigating the different programs and processes that were put in place and were changing. Other times, it was low-income residents who were one missed paycheck, one broken car away from catastrophe, losing their home, losing their housing. I also sat with landlords, learned the other side of the story, right? Landlords are not always large corporations, sometimes they're man-pa shops, and their interests matter. I plan to bring a listening ear that hears a diverse collection of residents to the Board. Second, I bring expertise in collaborative problem-solving. I have the technical expertise in that, that's what I do, I'm a mediator. My job is to sit down today with parents, come up with parenting plans. I launched the mediation program and the foreclosure, the eviction program and the foreclosure program through collaborative problem-solving with multiple stakeholders, listening to different ideas. I plan to take the voice that I mentioned earlier, the needs and interests, and apply that to a collaborative approach where I will look at data, research, best practices, and of course, what citizens want. These are just two of the skills I think I bring to the table. I'm committed to this community, I love this community, and I'm planning to raise my family here. For that, I thank you for considering me for the Third Ward Alderman position.
I guess you already answered my question, was what do you think your greatest strength is that you'd bring to the council?
So I mentioned two of my strengths, you know, listening, needs and interests are key to figuring out paths forward, right? You need to take the time, you need to have the humility to sit and hear what people want. But at the same time, you need to balance what people want against what may actually be the best interest, right? And that's where you take the process in. You need to do research, you need to collect data, and you need to weigh that. Sometimes, we can expand the pie, right? Sometimes, we can meet everyone's needs and interests and have a great, wonderful community. Other times, tough choices need to be made, right? There are sometimes winners, there are sometimes losers. Finding out which one of those paths, I hope to bring process to that rather than assuming I have the answer. Also, another strength that I have is that I'm pretty comfortable in front of folks. I may have started out a little nervous, but I have no problem chatting with citizens, chatting with angry people, people who don't like me, people who maybe do like me, and I'm very comfortable in that role, taking on a lot of attention. Hope that answers the question.
Chris?
I've also experienced mediation, but in terms of the actual job as an alderman, it's not always just mediating things or trying to, you know, bring everybody together because there's different things that you might have to promote for your particular ward or for the city itself that might not be amenable to just trying to, you know, find a compromise but make decisions. So what do you see your ultimate job as an alderman being in terms of your ward, the Third Ward, but also as City of Batavia as a whole?
Yeah, absolutely. I think the, the job sort of writ large is to make decisions, right? I think that the task placed before all of you and the task placed before me is to take a look at what's on the table, what the constituents want, but also what the best path forward is, and then make that decision and own it, right? I think most of you have done a wonderful job. I love the town of Batavia, but when there are missteps, I think it's important that we take them on and we recognize them. I am having flashbacks to the first professional job that I ever applied for. I talked up mediation, I talked up collaboration, and they said, sorry, we're not offering you the job because we don't think you can advocate, right? And I'm like, oh, shoot, here I am again. But I assure you that when I think an opinion is correct, when I think I've done the research and come to a conclusion, I'll pursue it. But I'm going to remain open before I draw that conclusion. So I hope that answers your question.
Your Honor? Yeah. You're dealing here with a city council and a city staff that has spent a lot of time over the last few years, kind of a high focus on the downtown area and improving it. And I think we've been fairly successful in doing that. Do you have any ideas or visions of any, any other new things you could see coming into downtown Batavia?
Yeah, absolutely. So first off, I engage with Downtown Weekly. I do play trivia every Thursday night, you know, I cornered one of the other people and introduced myself at the trivia game. And I'll, I'll say, I think that trivia game is the largest weekly trivia game in the state. I don't have data to back that up, but we've been traveling around for a long time, playing trivia all around the state, and this is the largest one, the best one, that we found in our 15 years of playing weekly trivia. I think the downtown area is wonderful, and I think a great job has been done. However, we do know that there are vacant storefronts, there's a lot of stores and shops and buildings that are oriented away from the river. I do think the river is one of our greatest assets, and I know there's a lot of change coming that way. I think we have an opportunity with the dam project coming around and the changes to the river to perhaps reorient how our town, downtown is situated, face the river, use the river as an asset and a draw, as opposed to a lot of our buildings that are facing the other way. Though that is long-term, of course, that's going to be a long time. I do think there are key areas around town, just outside the Third Ward. I think we have some great opportunities right on Main Street where we have Ali's Garage area, we have a lot of interesting development options there, as well as kind of our windmill countertops, right? I think those are two areas that with a little bit of focus, a little bit of time, effort, and energy could become draws. We have a, an antique shop right there on Main Street, which is sort of like a, an odd flower in the rough compared to what's there, and yet, it's a beautiful little place, it's a wonderful shop, I encourage you all to go there. So those are the few that come to mind as I just think of it now.
Mark? I want to piggyback off your comments on the river and the, and the dam and get an idea of your understanding of what we've thought about and your thoughts of the discussion that we've had.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I, when it came up, I did look at the different plans, and I apologize, I don't recall A, B, C, D, I don't remember them exactly, but you know, keep the pond, remove the pond, isolate the pond are some of the options. I'm going to be frank with you, I did a lot of work in Denver, I worked with Arapahoe County, I worked on waterways, and out there, there they say that water is for fighting, whiskey's for drinking, and what happens in the waterways is absolutely vital. Confluence Park in Denver, I was on the working group that manages that property. If you don't know Confluence Park, it's a whitewater rapids in-river structure. However, that also negatively impacts fish riparian habitat. So there's a balance here, right? We want to find, we want to find a way to draw people down to the river, to be engaged, to utilize it and have that as our asset, but also protecting our greatest natural resource. At the end of the day, you know, the dam's got to go. You know, I, there may be other opinions on the board, but it's an old dam, it's a, you know, a dangerous dam at times, and, you know, it unfortunately does need to go, which creates the opportunity to decide what the future will be. I hope I don't sound like I'm dodging your question, but I guess I would say I'm pro-dam removal. As for what happens to the pond, that's something that, I'm open to ideas, right? I don't know the right answer there, because the pond is also a wonderful asset, but without the dam, is it viable? I, I don't know, and I'm excited to dive into the, to the research and sort of what the, I assume the Army Corps is involved and what the other folks involved have to say about that.
Yeah, when were you in Botswana?
I wasn't in Botswana, I was in Lesotho. Yeah, yeah, Lesotho. So I was in Lesotho from 2008 to 2010. I was up, my hut was up in the mountains, the only ski slope in southern Africa was a mountain over, right? I'd wake up in the morning from my literal cow dung hut with a thatch roof, go outside, have to climb up the mountain to get my water, then go check Facebook on my cellphone. It was quite an experience. The work I did there was community development and community health, so HIV/AIDS was rampant there. But community development side with small businesses, I worked with small businesses in the area to find ways to bring in ecotourism, I was near a, near a site, and it was life-changing, you know, all the cheesy ways they say it would be, you know, cheesy and amazing and changed my life in so many ways, so.
Yeah, I was RPCV from Ghana in 92, 94, so quite a bit earlier than you, doing similar work, but so, the question I have for you is more of a philosophical question. You know, there's an elected official, we have to make decisions, we're elected to do that, and we represent constituents. Sometimes, there's not easy votes that you have to be taking. An issue comes up where a large number of your constituents are telling you they want you to vote a certain way, but you feel strongly that the right decision is opposite that. How do you handle that?
Yeah, I, first off, I think, I'd hope what I can bring to the table is transparency in my decision-making. I want to be open and honest about why I'm making the decisions I make. So hopefully, when I come to that conclusion, fingers crossed, that I have something to back it up. I have data, I have a reason why I've made that, that decision. And people are going to be mad, right? People get upset. And first off, again, I, I hope that I can take it, right? I can bring that on, I can bring that in. And what I hope I can do is validate those concerns, not in a dismissive way, but there's a reason they believe that I'm making the wrong decision. I need to understand what that reason is, and I need to communicate, one, why that reason isn't applicable here or why there's something that overrides it, and, two, help them explore other ways to meet that need or interest, right? Is there some other way we can fulfill that desire, whatever's underlying that motivation, to help them feel engaged? And then, three, you know, sometimes you do just need to say no, right? At some point, you need to say, "Okay, I've, I've taken my time, I've made myself clear, I've given options, and I'm sorry, though, this is where we're at."
This, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we have over 50 meetings a year here, and a lot of optional meetings above and beyond that, as well as a lot of reading. How do you plan to commit to that and balance your family, social, and professional lives also?
Absolutely. I'm not going to lie, that's my biggest concern about taking this position. I do have a young family, I think you saw my kids, right? Right now, I'm at a point where my children are old enough that I can now commit to this, right? I've reached that stage in my children's age and development. I also have a wife who is just lovely and supporting, and she really is just a great lady. And so, family support and my family is in a place. As for reading, you know, I am familiar, I read a lot. I'm, I, I work in the legal field and mediation, I have to read all the time. I'm not worried about the reading load, you know, so long as we can keep it under maybe 40 hours a week, I think I can, I can plow my way through it. But, you know, I can certainly commit to the times and the places that I need to be, and I have a support network to ensure that my family life is being taken care of. Professionally, I work a nine-to-five, and so, you know, I'm not generally available nine-to-five. I work at Aurora University as well, I teach mediation out there on evenings, and if I need to, I can move that around as well. So I have the flexibility to meet the, meet the needs. I did, and just last, I'll be quick. I spent a lot of time thinking about the commitment here, too. So I'm not saying that flippantly, I'm not saying that without consideration because that is my greatest concern, and I do want to make sure that if I put my name forward, that I can follow through with my commitment. So thank you for asking that.
Do you have any specific policy goals for your time in office?
So I, the short answer would be no to that, right? I don't come here with an axe to grind, I don't come here with an agenda, but I do come here with a vision, right? So while I don't have specific policy goals, a lot of the things I'm interested in have either already been decided or are so far in the future that they can't really necessarily be formed, but I do have a vision for where I hope Batavia can be. For one, you know, full disclosure, I do, or used to bike to work when I could. We are a mobile family, we walk, we bike, and so I do envision Batavia being multimodal, right? I recognize that bikes are here, they're going to be part of our infrastructure, so we need to plan for them. I also recognize that e-bikes and normal bikes are not the same thing. So I do know a lot of attention needs to be placed on multimodal transportation, walking, cycling, e-biking, and cars. Cars are also not going anywhere. We need to make sure that folks can have access to downtown if they choose to drive in, if they choose to walk in, if they choose to, to cycle. Also, growth is another part, place in Batavia that I take a lot of interest in. First off, I am very close to the development Ashton Ridge, right? My property immediately shares a border with HC Storm, and so I will look across my deck and I will see the new development, right? However, we can't let perfect be the enemy of the good, right? We need to balance the needs and interests. Development was going to happen there, no matter what, and I, we wanted to, and I would have been interested in making sure that it was thoughtful and considered as it was, right? I was very impressed with the process it took, and I don't know if there was a perfect answer for that, but ensuring that development is sustainable, that thoughtful, and that it meets the needs of the town in a lot of ways. The last thing I'll say then, I think I already gave this away, too, is that access to the river, sort of nature being integrated into the city is another thing that's going to be pretty important to me. You know, I do think that's why we moved to Batavia, that's something that Batavia has over other towns, and I think we've done a great job with that and just carrying that legacy forward in such a way that folks continue to want to move here. So I hope that answered your question without giving you sort of a specific policy that, because I honestly don't come with a specific policy.
Abby?
You mentioned biking and walking here in town. We did recently pass an active transportation plan, and I just wanted to know if there was anything specific that you see around town, being a pedestrian and a cyclist, that you would like to see improved over the next couple of years?
Yeah, you know, I do, I appreciate the improvements in signage that have occurred and the chevrons on the road and bike lanes where they're coming into place, but it is still at times difficult. Now, I'm at a stage in my biking where I have kids riding with me, right? They're in, in the back trailer. And so, the more that we can slow traffic down in the appropriate places and redirect cyclists to the appropriate places, again, we need to have that balance, the better things can be. The plan itself, I did look at it, and, you know, I was interested in the Transportation Commission at one point when it fit with my schedule, but I, I didn't look at it closely enough to have the specifics, and I apologize for that. The route we would take, we would come up Millview, drop my wife off at the high school, and then I would have to ride down Western Avenue into Geneva. And that intersection right there at Western and Fabian was perhaps the worst riding I've done in my life. And I rode in downtown Denver, right? Downtown Denver on the streets with no bike lanes, and that intersection was among the worst. There are a few other intersections that, that are really hairy, and of course, we've seen some of the unfortunate consequences of that recently. And so I do think there's a lot of work that can be done, and I'm also happy that that work is being done, right? That this board has been taking it seriously, and I'd, I'd like to join that team, I'd like to be part of, of that solution, so.
Anybody else have any questions?
Okay, thank you, and hang around out there, we'll make a decision in a little bit.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, Joanne didn't show up?
Not anywhere. There's line three in that room.
Which one didn't show up?
Joanne Gustafson.
I'm Gustafson.
Oh, Gustaf, okay. All right. Now we will move into executive session. He's going to double-check real quick, okay. And we'll wait for that then. Did you ever check, did anybody else get an email?
I don't think anybody. Did you get an email from me with the electronic? I tried to do it at the beginning of the meeting, so. Five, six, seven. Do it the old-fashioned paper way.
We're going to hand these out. So Max, no. Well, I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session to decide on the automatic candidate. So motion by Solf, a second by Malay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
So, we ask all members of the public...
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Welcome back, sure. We're going to go back into regular session, and we'll have a roll call for regular session.
Barazza, Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Solf.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uwer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogel Singer.
Eleven. We will announce now that the next third ward alderman is Kevin Malone. Congratulations. And also wanted to remind everybody that the entire side, on this side, is up for election in '25, and now, three more are up for election as well. Everybody that has been appointed during this term would be, their seat would be up for election again in '25. So this seat, Justin's and Robbins. So there will be 10 open seats up for election in this year, which I think is a record. I don't know, you would know.
I think you're right.
I, I don't remember that being that many. I, I think we've had seven or, or eight or nine maybe, but that's about it, so. Mark, you?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you all did an excellent job, and every time we've had these in the kind of the midterm, it has always been close, and it was close again. So the mayor will talk about other opportunities for those that are still interested in doing something, because usually there's something with plan commission or a store commission or something that exists that can get you involved. And mayor, I'm not sure what openings are out there right now?
Right now, we're, we're pretty full up, but things will change, and it's good to know some folks who really have an understanding and a desire to serve, and so your names will be on the list on my desk.
None of us up here will forget about you, and we'll find something for you to...
Right, but you all, you know, what, if I appoint you to something, these folks will have to approve it, so, but you, you all made a very strong presentation tonight, so I don't, I'm looking for anybody to say, "Now, don't appoint that person," so there's none of that, so.
And Josh, we need you to remain where you're at on your commission, though, so, you know.
At this point, I'm probably just, Steve wants someone to step up in this place.
Excellent. Thanks.
Great. Just, just full disclosure, it was a ranked choice voting system that we used, so, just so you're aware.
Yeah, that's, we've done it the past five or six times, it's worked very well, and each time, I will say this, the time that I've been on the council, I've been here the longest, it just gets better and better each time, and it's harder and harder to make these decisions, because we find that it's people that have paid attention to what's going on in town, want to be involved, know what's going on with a myriad of the things we deal with every meeting, and it's really good to see that and see that interest is out there, because for years and years, there's been unopposed races all around this table, and it's just, it's frustrating even just to see the turnout in some of our wards and how low it is when we get to, to the elections and have to, to see that.
how low it is when we get to, to the elections and have to, to see that. And I think, at least for me, every year when we go through this, which it seems like we've done quite often the past few years, it's, it's a, to me, a great sign to see people step up and come up here and passionately talk about why they want to be in one of our seats, which I think is great, because I think that's something that, at least from, from my point of view, I'd like to see more of that. And the fact that there are people every time we get to this point has been, really feels good.